Test, one, two, three.
Good evening. I called to order the regular business meeting of the Lakewood City Council on August 12th, 2024 at 7:05 PM. To connect with the council meeting, please use one of the following links at Lakewoodspeak.org or Lakewood.org/councilvideos. For online public comments, you may post comments of any link directly on our online platform, Lakewoodspeak.org. That's an online forum for public comments that we will leave open through 10:00 AM tomorrow morning. You know, we do, we do technology every day now, but there's still always the opportunity for adventure. So bear with us one moment. Okay, all right. So back to our online forum. Lakewoodspeak.org is a platform that anyone listening to us remotely, or even here in chambers, can go in online, leave a comment that will actually be put verbatim into the public record for this evening's meeting. For anyone that would like to address the city council, there will be several opportunities throughout the night. Many, several of them attached to agenda items this evening, and then we will have general public comment for non-agenda items later on this evening. We'll go into more specifics about that as we get there. For item number two, will the clerk please call the roll?
Strom.
Here.
Olver.
Here.
Maya Guerrero.
Here.
Stewart.
Here.
Ryan.
Here.
Charzai.
Here.
LaBure.
Here.
Counselor Nystrom is absent. Counselor Lo.
Here.
Cruz.
Here.
And Sinks.
Here with great apologies.
Mayor Strom, you have a quorum.
Okay, thank you very much. And if you are able to stand, we ask you to join us to do so for the Pledge of Allegiance, and once done, we'll remain standing for a moment of silent prayer.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and indivisible in its essence.
All members of the city council have the responsibility to comply with the terms of Charter 7.2 Princeby and excuse themselves from voting on any matter in which they determine they have a personal financial or business interest. The city council is empowered by Charter 7.2 Princeby to agree by unanimous vote excluding the member at issue to excuse any member of the council from voting on a matter in which they determine such member has a personal financial or business interest. So this is the point in the evening where I will make a note of an agenda change this evening. You, oh, reminder, or just to let anybody know, for those of you that have not joined us previously, in addition to being an online forum that accepts public comment, Lakewood Speaks does also house a number of documents that the council used in preparation for our meeting this evening. So if there are any topics that we cover, any details that you would like, Lakewoodspeak.org is where you'll go, and then select the meeting date for this evening's meeting. So for those of you that looked at the agenda for tonight's meeting before arriving this evening, you will have noticed that on the consent agenda, we did have an item, or do have an item, that is addressing and updating our policies and procedures. I know that we have several counselors that have amendments to make to this, so we will be pulling that item from the consent agenda this evening and doing that later on. With that being said, do we have any other agenda items that council would like to pull from the consent agenda this evening? Nope? Okay. All right. Well, then, will the clerk please read the amended consent agenda, or the consent agenda as amended into the record?
Thank you, Mayor. The consent agenda is comprised of the following items. Item six, Resolution 2024-37, authorizing the assignment to the Housing Authority of the City of Lakewood, Colorado, DBA Metro West Housing Solutions of the City of Lakewood's 2024 Private Activity Bond Volume Cap Allocation pursuant to the Colorado Private Activity Bond Sealing Allocation Act. Item seven, Ordinance O-2024-20, amending Chapter 14.06 of Title 14 of the Lakewood Municipal Code and adopting by reference to 2023 National Electric Code as adopted by the State of Colorado by and through the State Electrical Board. Item eight, approving minutes of the city council meetings, city council regular meeting minutes, June 24th, 2024, city council regular meeting minutes, July 8th, 2024. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Robb. And with that, we do have, we did have a sign up in the back for anyone that had, was here this evening to do public comment on any of the items that are relating to the consent agenda. I don't have anyone signed up here. Is there anyone that does wish to speak on any of the items that Mr. Robb just read into the record? No? Okay. Well, with that, may I have a motion, please, for the consent agenda?
Mayor Strom, I move for the approval of the city council minutes, orders, order all ordinances introduced on first reading to be published in the Denver Post with public hearing set for the date included in the ordinance, and adoption of resolutions, all of which are included in the consent item introduced in the record by the city clerk.
Second. Okay, thank you. And council, do we have any comments, questions, or discussion? All right, and seeing none, we'll go ahead and cast your votes, please. And with that, the consent agenda passes unanimously, zero and A's. All right. And with that, will the clerk read our next item into the record, and that would be item number nine, Resolution 2024-38.
Item nine, Resolution 2024-38, to submit to a vote of the registered electors of the City of Lakewood at the state general election on November 5th, 2024, a ballot issue for the purpose of authorizing a voter-approved revenue change for the City of Lakewood.
Okay, thank you very much. And I will make note that there are, were 13 public comments made on Lakewoodspeak.org for anyone that would like to read public comments that are out there. For this evening, we do have a presentation on this topic. I will hand over the floor to our Budget and Audit Chair, Counselor Stewart, who will introduce our presenter and the topic.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm just going to offer a brief overview of the recommendations that our Budget and Audit Board has brought in front of the council today and how we got here. Discussions around the long-term funding, as well as our aging infrastructure as a city and the needs surrounding that. Conversations around that have been going on predating my time on the Budget and Audit Board, as well as many of our time on council. So this has been a longcoming discussion. But for the past two years, the Budget and Audit Board has decided to undertake a really thorough investigation and understanding of our long-term needs as a city, as well as some funding priorities and long-term planning around that, so that we can be as fiscally responsible as possible. So the Budget and Audit Board decided to undertake research around community needs and desire for continued and ongoing investment in our city. So we had an initial community survey back in April, and we had a study session back in May, which you all remember. The community survey showed that priorities continue to be around parks and open space, public safety, and roads and infrastructure. Currently, Lakewood has a revenue retention. In order to invest in those three buckets, it is ending very, very soon, and funding basic services is really the essential work of the city and the essential ongoing work of the city. So, based on the feedback from our study session, we moved forward, and our next ask was whether or not Lakewood residents would have an interest in continued revenue retention with a separate fund to continue to invest in these community priorities. The Budget and Audit Board met a couple of weeks ago to hear these results, and we have brought forward our recommendation to the council based on these results, and based on the last many, many years of work and community stakeholding that we have been doing. I have heard from constituents how glad they were to have been part of this process, and how excited they were to actually have input into what they wanted our funding priorities to be as a city, and to have us actually ask for their thoughts and incorporate that. So today, we have Mr. Ryan Winger, who is going to be here with a short presentation. He's going to answer some questions and share a brief overview with all of council. We also have some of our Budget and Audit Board members who are our community members from the Budget and Audit Board here as well. So if anyone on council has questions for them as well, they are available. So with that, take it away, Mr. Winger.
Thank you, Counselor Stewart, and thank you all for your time this evening. Let's, let's get right into it. As was mentioned, this was a survey conducted from the period of June 6th to June 23rd. Over there on the left side of your screen, you just seen example of the text message that was sent to a sample of registered voters within Lakewood. And for this survey, we completed interviews with 1,503 Lakewood residents. So, very pleased with the response rate, gives us a margin error of roughly 2.5%. But importantly, it's important to know that these results are weighted to match what we expect turnout to look like this November. We wanted to make sure we had accurate representation of that. And just, this may be a little difficult for some to see in the back, but this is a demographic breakdown with the red box around, you see, 2020, 2020 being the last comparable November election, because it was the last presidential year. Oh, yeah, thanks. And so let's get right into it. As Counselor Stewart mentioned, this was just continuing a conversation following the What Do You Want for Lakewood survey that was conducted earlier this year. And so the important thing to know about this survey is that we tested two different versions of ballot language. So it was an A/B test where half the sample received a version of the ballot language that had a sunset included in the language. The other half received a version of the ballot language that did not have a sunset included. And so first, we'll take a look at the version with the sunset. You see there the ballot language, and each year thereafter until December 31st, 2040, there's the sunset that was tested. You see the different, the one-third, one-third, one-third for the different purposes that Counselor Stewart mentioned. And then we asked them, how would you vote if this was on the ballot? 54% would vote yes and approve it. 42% would vote no and reject. Then you see the 4% there undecided. Moving on to the version that had no sunset. So you see, this language is exactly the same, except it does not include that sunset clause. Same, same otherwise language, the exact same, 52% would vote yes and approve, 44% would vote no and reject, and 4% undecided. So slightly higher measurement among the sample that had the sunset in their ballot language. We then wanted to include just some information, right, to more, more information about how these sunsets have been used in the past, how they could be used in the future, just to see what resonated most with the respondents. And you'll see, these are ranked in order of what resonated the most. And really, what resonates the most is talking about, one, what's been done in the past, and two, what could be done in the future. And so, statements like this, retained revenue has also funded important city infrastructure and transportation needs, including these five bullet points. When folks are aware of that, 65% are more likely to vote yes and approve, so roughly two-thirds. So that resonates very well. The other thing that resonates well is the idea that the taper dollars that are retained are in an entirely separate fund. And that not only that, residents can go to Lakewood.org/LakewoodFunding to see exactly how the funds are spent. 64% are more likely to approve after being informed of that fact. Also, the funds would allow the City of Lakewood to expand the uses for public safety. So while we're still obviously in that category of public safety, city could now use the funds to hire mental health and medical professionals to accompany police response on calls for service, just as an example. So again, we're, some pieces, we're educating them about what's been done in the past, some about potential uses in the future. 64% are more likely to approve after learning that. 64% are also more likely to approve after learning that the ballot language could expand the usage for open space, parks, and recreation. For example, things like trail improvements and missing connections. All, you can see, all these things resonate fairly well. We consider anything over 60% when we do a survey like this to be a strong piece of information. Here's the past usage of parkland acquisitions and improvements, including that graphic directly in the survey, so that they're aware of how it's been used in the past, 61% more likely to approve. 60% more likely to approve, knowing how it has been used for public safety needs in the past, including things like body-worn cameras for officers, specialized staff, health and wellness assessment for all police officers and public safety personnel. Again, these are the kind of things that the average resident may have heard about maybe at one point, but it's not top of their mind. We want to make sure that they know. Here's exactly what's been done with these funds. It would also allow the city to expand the usage of funds for streets, sidewalks, paths, and infrastructure. For example, things like bicycle lanes and multimodal transportation, 60% more likely to approve. But you see here a drop in terms of the information that we're providing them. Only 50% are more likely to approve when, when they learn about this. If voters do not extend their retention taper funds beyond 2025, the city would begin returning them taxpayers each year. This would be done through a mill levy reduction. For a home valued at $500,000, it would amount to approximately $85 per year. So that kind of message is obviously a little bit in the weeds. You can see, it doesn't necessarily resonate as much with the average person as just talking in general about what's been done, or what could, what could be done in the future. Also, for the past five years, retention has accounted for 3% of the city's budget. And again, we're kind of getting far afield from, you know, the average person, okay, 3% of the city's budget, I don't know what the city's budget is. It just, it doesn't, it's, like I said, it's in the weeds. It doesn't, it doesn't resonate as much for them. And then 46% would be more likely to approve, knowing that if the funds are refunded through a mill levy reduction, Lakewood residents who do not own property would not directly receive any of the refund. And again, I think a lot of that is just kind of wonky policy information that's not necessarily resonating with them in a way that parks and open space, public safety, infrastructure really resonates with them. And so with that, we wanted to ask again, okay, now that you, now that you have a better understanding of how these funds have been used to date, and not only that, how they could be used in the future, how would you vote? Again, looking at the sunset, you see the sunset clause there, and it increases to 59%. Including the largest group, 39% would definitely vote yes and approve. 37% would reject, 4% undecided. So if you remember, oh, and here's the informed ballot test, only among the undecided voters, 38% lean towards voting yes, 12% no, 50% say, stop asking me, I'm undecided, right? So you see the 5% jump there, from the uninformed to the informed. Clearly, once, once these people are educated more about what these funds do, what they could do, there is a significant bump in support. We didn't want to leave it there, though. We want to ask why. Why would you vote yes and approve it? And not surprisingly, they value things like the infrastructure improvements. They believe it would make the community a better place. They believe in fairness and equity, the idea that it's unfair only to refund the taxes only to property owners. So obviously, a strong sentiment there among those who would not stand to benefit from this refund. Also, there is a segment that is, just believes in the inefficiency of taper and saying, you may as well retain the funds without having to ask us necessarily. And then long-term benefits over what they consider to be a relatively small personal refund for themselves. As for the no voters, here are the themes that shine there. Tax burden and government spending, obviously, just the idea that, that government must live within its means and be more responsible, lack of trust and transparency among this group of voters, and then also just a desire for refunds, no matter how large or small they are, and just a general limited government philosophy. Thinking now about the informed ballot test with no sunset, again, same, same ballot language, no sunset clause, it moves to 60% support. 36% would reject, 4% undecided. Same, same thing on the, among the undecided voters, except slightly more are leaning towards no than yes, but a plurality, nearly half, are still undecided. And so you see an even larger jump here among this portion of the sample that received the segment that had no sunset. And they had the same rationale for why, just this idea that this would be a good thing for the community, the refunds- for the community. The refunds are relatively small, so we may as well pool them to, towards some of these substantial projects, just general support for local governments. And then just, again, the idea of equity and community benefit and not leaving out those non-homeowners who wouldn't receive direct refunds. And the same things as well among the no voters, just a general distrust, a desire for better fiscal responsibility, just a preference to get the refund themselves, and just a general belief in limited government. And here is a look at the survey demographics. If you're curious, again, where possible, these are weighted to match what we expect turnout to look like in November. And with that, I will turn it back over to Counselor Stewart and answer any questions.
Great. Really, really briefly, based on this data and the study session that the Budget and Audit Board had, we are recommending that the city council move forward with ballot measure language that is without a sunset, given the lack of statistical differences between both options in the community, and the fact that this kind of expansion of allowable funds within these three buckets is really in line with what the community was telling us was important to them. And we would ask for, we would ask for a yes vote, speaking for the Budget and Audit Board, to move this forward, to take it to a vote of the citizens of Lakewood.
Thank you, Mr. Winger, for your presentation this evening, Counselor Stewart, for your work, and for our Budget and Audit Committee that is here with us this evening. With that, we'll go ahead and open it up for counselor questions of our presenter and our staff. And first, I have Mayor Protam Sharazai.
Yes, thank you. Not really a question. I'm on the Budget and Audit Committee, so I just wanted to thank you for the time you took and for Counselor Stewart's leadership on this. I thought that the survey and the response and the quickness of the decision-making process that was led by community directive was a really efficient use of any funds that were allocated to this. And I think it just reinforces that Tabor was meant to be a vote for the people, and that's what we're hearing here. So we're reinforcing what Tabor's spirit is. Public safety, open spaces are the biggest requests that we see coming from community members every day. And I think that the voters will easily connect the dots on the $85 mill levy reduction, really being only for property owners and an equitable way for us to see community impact. So I'm feeling really optimistic about this, and I just wanted to share gratitude for that and for the leadership in that work. So thank you.
Do you have any other council questions or comments before we let Mr. Winger sit down? Okay, thank you very much. Oh, we have two that popped up. We'll go Counselor Ryan and then Counselor Sinks.
Thank you for the presentation. It's really informative. I'm curious on the sunset, why 15 years as opposed to any other number?
Sure, yeah. I mean, obviously, we've got to test something. That was kind of where staff landed on it as a 15-year number. You know, we do a lot of work like this. Typically, you know, a difference of five years, so 10, 15, 20, we typically don't see much of a difference. It's really when you start taking a sunset and either doubling it or cutting it in half where you might see a statistical enough change. So, you know, 15 is kind of a happy medium between 10 and 20, obviously. You know, for some of these projects, you don't want to go below 10 because, you know, it can just take a while to get things off and going off the ground. So you don't want to say a five-year sunset. That's pretty unheard of. So 15 was just kind of where staff landed on what they wanted to test.
And in terms of the results, I noticed that there seemed to be more support for not having a sunset, but they're pretty close. Is that within the statistical realm that basically they have the same amount of support, whether it's sunset or not sunset?
Yeah, I would say that. There's no statistical difference between the two. So whether you have a sunset or not is not going to necessarily make or break, you know, the chances going forward.
And this may be beyond the scope. There's been another, a number of entities that will be on the ballot basically asking for the same thing besides Lakewood. Does the request from other entities to essentially do the similar thing impact your results in any way?
It can. You know, generally, what, again, we do a lot of ballot measure surveys like this. Generally, what I've been telling our clients this year is it's more, it's more the length of the ballot than it is, you know, adding things up in their head and, you know, getting out a calculator. This year, my biggest concern is just the ballot being so very long, right? And so some language like this, where if they read it and say, what is this? Oh, I'm already tired, you know. But I don't necessarily think that it's a scenario where they're going to really be picking and choosing. You know, they're going to evaluate each on its own merits, but just the general concern of just a ballot fatigue, basically.
One last question, and I don't know if we do this, if we talk to staff separately, or is this just limited questions to our consultant?
If you have one for staff, that's fine.
Does staff have a recommendation between sunset or no sunset? I'll withdraw the question.
Oh, Counselor Sinks.
Thank you. Probably not. So many questions, just some statements. So it's very hard. That's why you're the professional. It's very hard to create a survey that statistically is responsible and accurate in showing all the ins and outs of the questions that you ask. So thank you for being available, and it's really great that the city then went this direction to hire you. I think it's also great that the city is putting it to a vote of the people. Now, again, of course, it's the law, but it's also really a great opportunity for the citizens to have their voices heard, and not just at time they vote, but also anytime. Talk to your counselor or the Budget and Audit Committee and point out where you think there's waste or whatever. So I just think the process has been really great. Thank you.
Yeah, and I would just add real quick. I mean, given the number of responses, not only to this survey, but to the previous survey, clearly, there is a lot of interest in the community in this topic. It's not something where we really were kind of pulling teeth, trying to get people's opinions. So you can see that come through, so.
Counselor over.
Thanks, Mayor. I was just wondering, are we talking about the overall vote, or are we restricting ourselves to questions for Magellan right now?
There's no motion. There's not a motion on the table?
Yeah, so I don't have a question. I'll pass.
Okay. Counselor Cruz, oh, I'm sorry, Stewart and then Cruz.
Thank you. This is just really brief. I just want to clarify, if I was not clear at the beginning, this was a fully Budget and Audit Board-led process with very minimal staff input, other than what our budget forecasts look like. This was completely decisions that were made by the Budget and Audit Board. The recommendations were made by the Budget and Audit Board. So I just want to be very clear, and community members.
Counselor Cruz.
Yes, thank you. As a member of the Budget and Audit Board, I also just wanted to express my thanks and just take a moment while we have you in this setting to also say thank you for the work on outreach in Spanish and in thinking about how to make this survey as accessible to as many voters in our community. I think that that's really important to getting a real sense of, you know, what everyone in our community thinks. So I just wanted to acknowledge that, and thank you and our wonderful community members for all the work on this.
Of course.
Okay, and with that, you can go ahead and have a seat. What we will do, Counselor over, we'll open up the public comment and then come back, make a motion, and then have any comments and discussion. So with that, I do have one community member that has signed up to speak on this issue. For anybody in the room that would now like to speak on this issue, you can see the clerk to get signed up. In the meantime, Mr. Kip Kokmire, you're up.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor Protam, counselors, Kip Kokmire from Ward 1. I am not here to talk about land use, but this is such an important issue for our city that I did want to say that I strongly support this recommendation from the Audit Board. You have all done a tremendous amount of work, and one of the things I applaud is the notion of going first out and figuring out what people want. That's what the consultant's report tells you, is what people want. And then if you put this on the ballot, then the voters ultimately decide. And that really is the key. I will tell you that perhaps the most important thing that argues in favor of this is the lack of outrage, because this is a widely supported notion. It is very difficult to be against empowering the voters. This is exactly what Tabor was designed to do. You have done your homework, put this on the ballot, and I am confident it'll pass. But whether it passes or not, it will be in the hands of the residents and voters of Lakewood, and I support that very much. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kokmire. Mr. Robb, I'll hand it over to you for, okay.
Good evening, council and city staff. Thank you for giving me a couple minutes to express my views. I want to let you know that I strongly oppose Resolution 24-38, and I think I speak on behalf of a lot of taxpayers in the City of Lakewood that maybe didn't receive the survey or didn't respond. I think the timing of the survey in June is a little weird because people are already on vacation. Quite frankly, the timing of this meeting and when this is happening is a little bit odd with school going back this week and it being a very busy time. I think the council chambers might be a lot more full if it was a different timing. I, this permanent removal of Tabor, I think, is the ultimate thing that is at risk here in Lakewood. And quite frankly, it is, since 1992, it has stood between government and taxpayers as a protection. I think removing that protection for time and all eternity is one of the worst things that this council has considered in a long time. I think Tabor was put in place for a reason. It served the taxpayers of Lakewood and the taxpayers of Colorado very well. And looking at all of you, I can tell the decisions have been made. You like the results of the survey. Quite frankly, spending $74,000 of our taxpayer money to figure out how to put this on the ballot in a way that it's palatable to the taxpayers galls me. It's a little bit disgusting. And the timing of doing this in general, when you look at the headlines and inflation and how it's impacting people, whether it's 85 cents, $85, $850, every dollar counts to people right now, who are trying to put groceries in their refrigerator, trying to put gas in their cars, trying to figure out how they're going to pay rent and mortgage. Obviously, the way the city decides to refund this is to homeowners, but they could look at it a different way. Like, for example, the water and sewer fee that's paid by all city, by all city residents. So anyway, I think, I see I'm down to 28 seconds. I strongly oppose this. I'll do everything within my power to get the word out and to make sure that the voice of the majority of the taxpayers is heard. I think your friends at Jefferson County will hear the same thing loud and clear. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Schrader.
Next, I have Natalie Minton.
Good evening, city council. Natalie Minton, Ward 5. I'm a member, I'm a community engager, been active for a very long time, but I'm also a member, board director with the Tabor Foundation. That's a Taxpayers' Bill of Rights Foundation. We specialize as a nonprofit in protecting Tabor. So please be assured, I have studied Tabor probably more than anybody here in this room. When you say that you are honoring Tabor with a permanent elimination of revenue limits, that's false. Douglas Bruce, the author of Tabor, wrote in there a four-year limit on these waivers. He is still alive. I can give you the phone number, and you can call him, and you can check, but it limits it to four years. When we talk about honoring voters, that's, this is false in this measure. This one set of voters will take away the right of consent from all future voters, all future voters. All future voters don't get consent. I'm looking at each of you, seeing if you agree with that. Do you agree with taking away the right to consent from all future voters? Do you agree with that? Do you agree with it? Do you? Do you? Do you? I'm hoping to hear your answer. Talked about, don't get into the wonky parts. Well, that's because when those polls were done, did it say something very, very clear like this? Shall tax revenue that would otherwise be refunded to taxpayers due to the limitations in the Taxpayers' Bill of Rights, Article 10, Section 20 of the Colorado Constitution, be retained by the City of Lakewood in 2026 and each year thereafter? Again, one set of voters is taking away the rights of all future ones. Are you all okay with that? Are you okay with those voters losing their consent? We are waiving our limits, the limits forever, giving up those rights. And let's reiterate, when the poll, which was paid with our taxpayer money to basically wordsmith questions, tries to imply the only way the rebate, Tabor rebate can occur, is to property owners, that's false. City of Lakewood could stop taxing food on, putting sales tax on food for immediate consumption, could have a sales tax holiday, could have a variety of different things. You phrase the question to get the poll results you wanted. You're not having an honest conversation with the voters. You're taking away the future voters' consent. Are you okay with that? Thank you. I'm not.
Thank you, Ms. Minton.
That is the end of my list. Mayor Shum.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much. And with that, do I, you know, we didn't give the Budget and Audit Committee a formal opportunity. Did either of you want to come up and say anything? I'm sorry.
Hi, Deb Hensmark, Ward 3. As Counselor Stewart said, this was an entire committee decision, and it's been something we have talked about now for three years, actually. The issue was, we didn't know. We saw this ending to the Tabor refund, you know, keeping it for the city's purposes. But we didn't know how to go forward, whether we let it end, or whether we go forward with asking the community if they wanted to go forward. And so being an unfunded committee, we were not sure how to get there. But with the help of our counselors on the committee, we were able to find the budget, someone found the budget, in order to have this research done for us, to help us know that we were doing what the city wanted us to do, what the citizens of the community were looking for us to do. And it's really been very helpful. We appreciate it very much. And I think we're asking the right question at this point.
Thank you, Ms. Hensmark. With that, I will go ahead and open to a motion.
Mayor, I move for the adoption of Resolution 2024-38.
Second. Okay. And any other council comments or discussion? Counselor over.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to be a no on this, and I'll probably be the only no. I'll make a prediction there. However, I'll also predict that when it comes to November, the vote will be a lot closer than it will be up here on council tonight. My no is a simple one. This is a tax increase. It's another tax increase. I just had... We were talking last year about our mill levy and the tax increases from property taxes. My property taxes went up 38% last year. I think doing this right now, even though you're doing it because it's an election or a presidential election year and more people vote then, it's also bad timing for it because of everybody just had to pay an incredible amount more in their property taxes. And I've been trying to find it right now online. I can't, but I just saw a headline this morning. It said Denver area inflation has been 24% or something like that in the last four years, five years. And so therefore, if inflation is that much, sales tax is going up that much, we are already getting a lot more money. But of course, we also have to pay a lot more money. But I'll go along with the whole thought of living within our means. I just don't like an increase in... Another increase in sales tax. I'm retired, except for this job, and I live on Social Security. And so more taxes, even if it's $85, amounts to something. And I think my prediction is this is going to go down in flames in November because of too many ballot measures that are trying to de-Tabor at the same time. And I think you're going to have people looking at that, and I think it's going to be a hard sell. It'll be close, but I think the vote in November will be a lot different than what it will be tonight here in council. Thank you.
Counselor Maia Carrero.
Thank you so much. I want to... I appreciate Counselor Stewart reminding us of the thorough discussions that we have been able to engage in before this, and in particular, referencing the study session where we were able to dig in in some more detail on this and discuss all of these sort of various choices that were able to be made to narrow down the options with the Budget Audit Committee that went into that poll. So there's really been a very good process, and I want to commend the full committee on making that happen so publicly and transparently. And I will definitely be a yes vote, which I'm sure is not surprising to anybody. But I also want to point out that within that wonderful thorough survey that we saw, my ward in particular polled at over 70% in favor. And so Ward 2 is a ward that we see some of our newer social programs sparking in. We see growth of our park system in Ward 2, and we see continued need for that investment in Ward 2. And I think that the amount of conversations that I have in any given day, in any given week, with the constituents in North Lakewood focused on the desire for that continued investment, for public safety that includes programs beyond traditional policing, for parks that are walkable, accessible, for the city to continue to provide additional services, that it does not feel like we have done what we need to do in order to make our community the best that it can be with these funds, which was the original intent of the Tabor pause in the first place. So it feels very appropriate to me to continue that same Tabor pause that has allowed for some of the investment, that is very real, very tangible benefit to all of Lakewood, not just to Ward 2, truly. But I did just really want to notice and reflect that it did not seem that close actually in any of the wards, but in particular in Ward 2, really, really overwhelming support. And I want to always be supportive of the full of Lakewood, but of course, it is my job to speak for my ward first and foremost. And then I also did just want to recognize that at least, that the most modest, most conservative guess is that 40% of households are renting. And it is likely actually higher in terms of individuals who are renting versus households and addresses. And that Ward 2, again, is a place where we see a huge percentage of people who do not currently own their properties and yet do evenly and equally benefit from these kinds of investments. So would not evenly benefit from the property tax refund, but will equitably benefit from the property tax being invested back into our community. And that is the kind of really responsible, thoughtful programming that I am excited to be a part of. And again, I want to thank all of the committee members. Thank you, the members of the community who are on that board, for really doing the work to make sure that this was thoughtful, like thorough, legitimate, had input, and is really going where people want to see it ahead of this vote, making it really, really easy for me when it could have been really hard.
Counselor Labure.
Thank you, Mayor. Just want to thank the Budget Audit Committee for, you know, putting in the work. I was on the Budget Audit Committee when we proposed this last time, and that was, I know, a fun process, and I'm sure you all enjoyed that. I'm glad I wasn't a part of it. But thank you. Just want to say, you know, it's hard to argue with just letting the voters pick what kind of community they want to live in. It's really hard to argue that. Voters chose Tabor, and voters have sort of unchosen Tabor in a number of communities. I was looking at the list here. 51 of 64 counties have D Bruce, 230 out of 274 municipalities, 177 out of 178 school districts have chosen this path. So if the voters want to make that decision, they have that opportunity, I think, if, assuming the council forwards on, they'll have that opportunity in November, and we'll all take our marching orders from that. But I will say, as someone who lives in this community, I want to see investment. I want to see investment in infrastructure. I want to see parks. I want to see acquisitions. I want to see, you know, enhanced maintenance. And when we kick these things off to the voters, and they tell us if we're on the right track or not, you know, we've had good results so far. I'm looking at some of the projects. We've passed, you know, parks that were purchased, you know, equipment for our police officers. And so I think the community has an opportunity to say if they like that and they want to continue that, and I think we should give them that opportunity. I think I'll leave it there, but looking forward to seeing how this goes and looking forward to hopefully more investment in the community. I guess I'll also add that we're a relatively low-cost city, and people forget that. We have a 3% sales tax rate that's just about lower than any other town in the metro area. There's a couple smaller, newer municipalities, I think maybe Lone Trees, Centennial, that have a smaller rate. And we also don't tax groceries. So, you know, these are... Make it challenging to see the kind of investment that citizens want to see. All the citizens come to us and talk about they want sidewalks, they want protected bike lanes, they want the LED lighting, you know, they want all these city services, and they do come at a cost. And so I think it's up to the community to let us know if they want to make that investment or not. Thanks.
Counselor Lo.
Thank you. I do want to just echo what's already been said, Counselor Stewart. You've put in a lot of work into this. Thank you. This is an important piece of business, so thanks for all the hours you've invested in this. And big thanks to the Budget Audit Board for all the work you put into this, too. It really, I think, shows in the level of thought that's been put into this issue. I want to very briefly clarify something. I mean, Ms. McKenney Brown, this came up a little bit in the comments. Can you or any staff really confirm that, you know, hypothetically, if later we... Someone on council wanted to increase taxes, wanted to increase sales taxes, or wanted to increase property taxes, notwithstanding what happens with this issue, that would be a separate matter that would have to go to the voters under the terms of Tabor? Is that correct?
That's correct.
And Ms. McKenney Brown, while I'm asking questions, I assume you would have told us if, for some reason, there was some limitation on our ability to sort of extend this and do this without a sunset. If there was some reason that it could only be done for four years or eight years, you would have advised us of that, right?
Yes, I would have. Anybody who's interested in learning more about Tabor, CML puts out a booklet on Tabor, and there's actually a section explaining where the four-year concept came from and also explaining that in 2002, the Court of Appeals refused to interpret it that way. And since then, many cities have been working with a... Without a sunset clause. So since 2002, that has not been accepted by the courts.
Thank you, Ms. McKenney Brown. And I guess I just want to call attention to the fact that the very first line of this initiative that we're being asked to refer to the voters is, without increasing current taxes or adding new tax, because it doesn't, right? I mean, under the terms of Tabor, if we... Any additional new tax or revenue increase would have to go to the voters. And if down the road, there's a push to do that, that would have to go to the voters. This is not a tax increase. This is extending current policy, right? Current policy since 2018, when Counselor Labure, in his first tour of duty, helped get this on the books, has been that Lakewood has a Tabor fund, and it funds important stuff. It funds sidewalks and infrastructure and parks and open spaces and our police and public safety. And guess what? I've heard from a lot of residents about the importance of those three different buckets of work. And I know from conversations certainly in Ward 3 that a lot of folks in Ward 3 would have very real concerns about a policy that suddenly cut or, you know, created a cliff where we lose $8 million, which is a real chunk of change in our budget. You know, Lakewood, at the local level of government, we do a lot. Local government is so important. It's a place where we all come together and we work together on parks and open spaces and sustainability, and we keep our streets safe, and we deal with homelessness, and we help, you know, connect folks with services, and we build sidewalks, and so much more. And every dollar of our budget is incredibly important. But I know from talking to my constituents that folks would have real concerns about losing that money. But guess what? This isn't, you know, under the terms of Tabor, which a number of folks brought up in their public comments, this actually isn't my decision. It's not Mayor Strom's decision or anyone else on this dais's decision. As a number of commoners have pointed out, it goes to the voters of Lakewood. Lakewood voters get to decide what they want to do with this. If they don't like that this has no sunset, they're free to express that in how they vote. Lakewood voters are free to evaluate this on its own terms. But I hope Lakewood voters will bear in mind that despite what some have suggested, this is not a tax increase. It says so right there in the terms of the measure that we're referring. Our city attorney has just confirmed it. It simply extends current policy and allows us to continue to keep this Tabor fund that's funding some of those critical, important functions in Lakewood city government. So thank you so much, Counselor Stewart, for your leadership on this, and to the other members of the Budget Audit Board. I am an enthusiastic yes on this.
Counselor Cruz.
Thank you. I think many of my fellow councilors have spoken quite eloquently to support of referring this measure, and I also will be a very enthusiastic yes and just wanted to, again, thank Counselor Stewart for her leadership as part of the board, as Chair of the Board. It has really been one of the biggest joys of the beginning of my council journey with our community folks and with staff. So it is really helpful to learn and feel affirmed in what the priorities of our community members has been and think about how we want to talk about this important issue of community investment and how we leverage our dollars going forward. So many of the investments that have already been made with the current Tabor pause dollars have come up in our community meetings time and time again, talking about some of the sidewalks, the park acquisition. People have already talked about this, right? And so I think not only is there great opportunity through asking this question, but there's also great risk with not asking this question for the future of the city that we want to build together. And I, again, am excited to put this in the hands of our very capable and thoughtful voters and have really important conversations about these issues in our community over the coming months. And in speaking to, you know, how the votes of today will kind of shape for the future of tomorrow and for, you know, future voters, I think the very fact that we are talking about this, Tabor was not only passed by voters who were voting before I could vote, it was before I was born, right? So I think that we have to be really mindful about we are building the future that we want to build together now and future voters, like the ones who are talking today versus the ones who were talking in 1992, you know, how that is going to go. So I am very enthusiastic yes, and I'm very excited for the community conversations that this will spark, and thank everybody for their leadership on this.
Counselor Ryan.
I'm going to just share my thanks to the Budget and Audit Committee and especially the community members. Those of us on the dais, we signed up for this, but you didn't, and you volunteered, and I thank you very much for taking that time. You know, one of the... In listening to people and asking folks, especially during the National Night Out, was a great opportunity to talk about some of these issues. No one says that they dislike how we are handling Tabor now. I've not heard a single comment where someone said, "I don't like that we have a transparent fund where I can see how my money was spent," and that "my money was spent on the three things that I care most about in Lakewood, and that's police, parks, and potholes." Not a single person has come to me and told me, "I don't like how we are currently doing this." The only question to me is whether we sunset or not, and that's why I asked those initial questions to our consultant about the statistical analysis. I've, you know, despite some of the folks who grumbled that we spent the money, I find it very educational, very helpful to me to make these decisions, to see how people responded to surveys. I can do my ad hoc and call people and ask my neighbors and things like this, but this is set up in a statistical way, and there's really no statistical difference, at least in Ward 4. There's a slight difference. There's a slight preference to having a sunset or not sunset. That's my only piece. As to the comments about the timing, that this is a bad time, I agree. I mean, the last thing we want is more taxes. But you know what? This is very important in terms of what our investment is going to. Again, this goes to the basic government services. The reason that we're put here, to help the city provide good governmental services, going back to the police, parks, and potholes. I can't think of anything more worthy that we would set aside this money for. I want to ask us to think about just the importance of these investments, because ultimately, whether this is a bad timing or not, that's for the citizens to decide. That's really the answer to all of those questions that I'm hearing as to the negatives of why we shouldn't do this. We're going to let the citizens decide. Is this good timing? Let the citizens decide. Is this going to go down in flames? We're going to let the citizens decide. That's the ultimate goal of Tabor. Let the citizens decide whether to entrust our local governments to spend the money wisely. And I can't think of a better structure in having it as a dedicated fund that's transparent for all to see on how the money has been used. So I'm a yes.
All right. Thank you, Council. I will quickly throw my thoughts in there, the ring. So I wanted to just quickly point out that where this conversation started is on the Budget Audit Board, which at the time, I think I was chairing, yeah. And we're talking about a lot of long-term priorities. So our buildings, just as many of the homes across the city of Lakewood are aging infrastructure, and we have a lot of needs that are present in our face today, evidenced by the land that we just recently purchased for the new maintenance facility and a maintenance facility that is forthcoming that is much needed, in addition to a number of buildings across our community. And as Mayor Protem Sharazai had pointed out, we get emails every single day asking us for cleaner streets, safer streets, and park space. Like, those are the three. In fact, for those that may have been chiming in or listening to some of our more recent meetings, we have a very healthy amount of community members that right now are asking our city to buy more park space. And these kinds of funds, this is one of many tools that we can utilize. There are others that are out there, and I'm personally excited for the possibility to send this to our residents to make the ultimate decision on whether these things are that important, that we do want to keep them to fund. So I personally will likewise also be a yes. And I do, again, want to thank all of our community members that shared their voice either through the either through the survey, whether they went directly to lakewood.org, received the text messages, or community members that participated and came to our Budget Audit Board meetings, or submitted public comment earlier through our study session. So, thank you very much for chairing this effort, Counselor Stewart. And with that, we do have a motion and a second on the table, so I will go ahead and initiate. Please feel free to go ahead and start the vote. All right, and that passes nine yays, one nay, the nay being Counselor over. Will the clerk please read into the record, item 10?
Item 10, Resolution 2024-39, approving participation by the City of Lakewood in a coordinated election to be conducted on November 5, 2024, by the Jefferson County Clerk and Recorder.
Thank you. And I do not have anyone signed up for public comment on this particular topic. Is there anybody in the room that would like to speak on item number 10? Item number 10 is an intergovernmental agreement that basically will allow us to work with the county to put the item that we just passed on the ballot in November. Okay, and with that, I see no public comment, so may I please have a motion for item number 10?
Mayor, I move for the adoption of Resolution 2024-39.
Second. All right, any counsel comments, questions? All right, and with that, go ahead and please cast your vote. And that passes 10 yays. Okay. Now we go back to our consent agenda pulled, item number five, which is our new and improved, updated policies and procedures. Will the clerk please read item number five into the record?
Item five, Resolution 2024-36, adopting the 2024 Revised City Council Policies and Procedures Manual.
Okay, is there anyone who wishes to speak on the ever-exciting topic of updating policies and procedures? Okay, I have no one signed up here. With that, may I please have a motion?
Mayor, I move for the adoption of Resolution 2024-36.
Second. Okay. And this is the point in which, counsel, you know you can bring forward amendments. I know we have several. So, go ahead and raise your hand, and we'll get started. Counselor Matt Guerrero.
I actually just have a point of procedural clarification before we start the amendment process, which is just that we are amending policies and procedures, which is referenced by the resolution, but not actually the resolution itself. And so, I just wanted to make sure that we're doing that right. And I apologize for not bringing this to your attention earlier in the day. I hadn't really thought it all the way through until, like, 6:00 PM. So, at that point, I figured it was about the same amount of prep.
One second. The resolution is to adopt the 2024 Revised City Council Policies and Procedures as attached here too and incorporated herein. So, the resolution will not change, but any modifications made to the policies and procedures, I am going to be typing like a mad person and making sure those go in. So, you will approve, if there are any changes, you will approve those. And then, when you approve the resolution, it is to include the amended policies and procedures as presented.
Does, sorry, does that mean that we need to have, like, the official, move the amendment, second it, to still make that make clean sense?
Yes.
Okay.
Do make a motion to amend the policies and procedures. And the motion doesn't have to be about a single item. If you have three items you want to move all at once, that's fine, as long as the clerk can track the actual change that's being acted upon.
Maybe, Counselor, it would be cleaner if we remove the first motion, we'll just go through the others, and then do as amended at the end. Okay. Can we remove our motion? I will remove my second.
I remove my motion.
All right, thank you, everyone. With that, how about our amendments? Not too quick. Okay. Counselor Ryan.
So, hopefully, everyone received these in your email. I think they're fairly straightforward in Policy 5. So, I move for three changes, one in 5.0. The third sentence, it starts off by saying, "The purpose of a study session is," and then it stops. And so, I suggested language, but I'm not tied to any particular, "to give city council the chance to work on a particular issue or issues that comes from a local city," or "policies and procedures," and "to provide city staff with direction in drafting proposed legislative action," which came from a different city. Policy 5.5, I recommend deleting numbered paragraph four, because it's already in Policy 6.1. And 5.5 is entitled Preparation for Meetings, and the paragraph 4.4 talks about the time that we get to talk during a meeting, which, again, is covered in 6.1, and it's perfect for there, so it's really more of a cleanup there. And then, 5.9, General Business, the second, paragraph, second sentence, it currently reads, "No off-agenda item may be introduced for final action by the city council during general business." But we do have an exception in Policy 5.6, which says that we can request executive session at any time, so I'm suggesting that we add the language at the end of the sentence, except as provided in Policy 5.6. And those are the amendments.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Ryan. Counselor Cruz, you raised your hand to speak. I'm guessing, is it about your amendments? So, let's, yes, let's do that. So, we'll talk through Counselor Ryan's, we'll settle on something there, and then I'll come back to you for the two that you had. Okay, so, we'll start then, Mayor Protam Sharazai.
Yes, thank you. So, in the study session, we talked at length about...
Did we get a second on the motion?
We removed the motion.
Oh, for the amendment? Or do we not need to do that?
Oh, sorry.
Well, we don't have, you didn't do a formal motion, did you?
He's, yeah, I think he did.
I was told that we should make a motion, either individually or altogether, for the ones that were suggested, so I did, but I can withdraw it if it makes it easier.
Second.
There you go.
Okay, so, we talked at length at the study session about the inclusion in Policy 5.5, paragraph number four, because this is a new policy. So, while it is redundant, there was consensus at the study session that a little redundancy would be helpful, since this is a brand-new thing, and we are all trying to hold ourselves to the standard. So, I would be a no on that particular amendment for that reason.
Would you support the other two?
I would. I'm not sure that I followed the first one. I'm trying to see in the space where we're referencing.
Page 19?
Page 19. So, it's the third sentence of study session meetings, not of the whole document, correct? Okay. I would be fine with the other two, but not with the second.
I, this is a little wonky, so I'm going to take a little creative latitude here, if you guys will bear with me for just a minute. But are there, I'm thinking, if we maybe pull out 5.5, and look at 5.0 and 5.9, and then come back to 5.5? Is there anybody that had concerns about 5.0 and 5.9? Yep. Counselor Low.
Not, well, yes, but the most nitpicky kind. I appreciate Counselor Ryan's eagle eye. I definitely support both. He caught, I'm happy to support 5.9. 5.0, he caught an important typo, so the way it currently reads is, "The purpose of a study session is no final decisions of the city council may occur at a study session." So, it sort of mashes, there's a first sentence that was never finished, he's right. And then, there's a second sentence that sort of starts in the middle of that sentence that says, "No final decisions of the city council may occur at a study session." So, I think his edit is great, which is to flesh out the purpose of a study session. The only thing I just wanted to clean up is, I think we still need to preserve the second sentence, which is supposed to be its own sentence, which should read, "No final decisions of the city council may occur at a study session." So, if I could just suggest a thoroughly friendly amendment, I would have that sentence read, "The purpose of a study session is to give city council the chance to work on a particular issue or issues, and to provide city staff with direction in drafting proposed legislative action." Period. Capital N, "No final decisions of the city council may occur at a study session."
Thank you, yes. It was never my intention to delete any words in that.
I did not think it was.
Yeah, thank you.
So, with that...
Certainly accept that.
Okay, with that very friendly amendment, I fully support 5.0 and 5.9.
Any other thoughts or concerns about 5.0, 5.9? Can we remove the motion for the three? Restart, do the motion for the 5.0 and the 5.9, and then we'll come back to 5.5?
I retract my second.
And I retract my motion and make a new motion to amend Policy 5.0 and 5.9 with the friendly amendment that was made earlier.
Second.
All right. So, with that, if counsel will, did you have another comment? Did I not? Okay, nope, that was probably my fault. Okay, so, a yes vote is, yes, we want to accept Counselor Ryan's edits to Policy 5.0 and 5.9. So, if everyone will go ahead and cast their votes there. All right. This passes 10 yays. Counselor Ryan, I'll hand the floor back to you. Oh, sorry.
Actually, I'll hand it back off to someone else at this time.
Do you not want to talk about 5.5?
Let's find out what people think about 5.5. I mean, if we want to, if we want to just hammer this home by repeating it over and over again, that's fine. I don't see any need for it, it seems redundant, but if people want to keep it in, I'm not heartbroken to do that.
Counselor Seeks.
Sometimes repetition aids learning, says the teacher.
Counselor Matt Guerrero.
I don't know that I need to add anything to that. I did just, I wanted to reiterate as a member of the committee that that was something we discussed at length, and we really wanted to enumerate this section with more detail on how to be prepared for council meetings. And I think in particularly not just to make it clear for us as council members, but also to make it clear for community members, that that means that there is a level of due diligence happening before we're here, and we can't expect 100% of information to happen here. And also for staff to know that they can expect us to engage in materials ahead of being here. And I think that those were, like, again, so not just for ourselves, but also for the public and for staff, clarity on, like, the expectations that we can have was part of why we stretched it out here. I agree that it is referenced in the other place, but I don't think that it is just as clearly enumerated.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Ryan, what's your thought?
I won't make the motion.
All right, then, we shall move on to Counselor Cruz.
All right. So, I move to amend the policies and procedures as follows. So, page 22, 5.1, the bullet point about reasonable accommodations. So, after policy, add, additionally, reasonable accommodations will be made for meeting participants and members of the public who have requested language interpretation and wish to address council in their primary language. Additionally, page 30, testimony slash commentary, add a section before pooling agreements titled, "Time Limits at Public Hearings for Members of the Public Using Language Interpretation Services. If a member of the public who has requested language interpretation services wishes to speak at a public hearing in their primary language, time spent interpreting their comments will not be counted towards their time limit, i.e. three minutes, or the time allotted for other individual participants to address city council."
I'm sorry, Mr. Robb, did you get the second?
Yeah.
Okay. Counsel discussion. Counselor Matt Guerrero.
I personally feel in favor of this. Language access was something that we discussed, and recognizing that we do have processes for this, wanting to actually then enumerate these protections within the policies and procedures feels very appropriate to me.
Okay, any? Counselor Low and Counselor Seeks.
I too am in favor of this. I think this is very in the spirit of the campaign that Counselor Cruz ran, of making Lakewood government more accessible to folks whose primary language is not English, of which we have quite a few, certainly in Ward Two, also in my ward. So, appreciate the work that went into this, and very enthusiastic about supporting it.
Yes, I think it's really great, a spirit of inclusivity, et cetera. What I wonder, however, is somewhere else, does it tell the process? For example, who have, in the top paragraph, for those who have requested language interpretation. So, for example, do they need to request it of the city clerk by noon? You know, we have one, like, if they're, if somebody wants a video, then they have to give that to the city clerk by noon. So, I wonder, is that somewhere, or is that something we need to think about?
I'm happy to, Mr. Robb, might you be the one to answer that question?
Sure, thanks, Mayor. We have language at the top of every meeting agenda about providing notice to staff for accommodations. And so, we could work with that language to make it kind of agree or merge with the amendments being offered, the amendments and the spirit being offered by counsel.
Okay. Are we ready for a vote? You guys are such ninjas, it's last-minute speaking. All right, with that, we have a motion?
Sorry, I wasn't really clear. So, does that mean there would be an interpreter here that would just be ready to interpret once someone identifies that they need that language interpretation? Is that what you were saying?
If we had to, we've done this for administrative hearings. We've, we have a contractor that does interpreting in person. And we've also, we have a language line service that allows a virtual connection. We've done both of those options for, you know, people that don't speak English firsthand or primarily. And so, that's just kind of an example of what we could offer. Again, you know, we're asking for advanced notice for accommodations currently, and we would appreciate, you know, as much advanced notice as we could, but if we had to, we could accommodate, you know... the night of or, you know, within a couple, within a couple of minutes, so.
Okay. I think we're ready to cast a vote. So a yes vote would be approving both of the proposed amendments that Counselor Cruz has brought forward this evening. All right, and that passes. 10 yeas, 1 nay. Mayor Protam Sharzai.
Yes, thank you. I'd like to turn our attention to page 28, policy 5.7. And then the second paragraph under procedure. I apologize for the late notice on this, but just in rereading this again today. "Requests submitted outside of the annual planning retreat are added to the next in-progress regular city council meeting agenda meeting packet." I'd like to make a motion that we include at the end of that sentence, "Subject to internal packet deadline." Because we are hearing, we are getting folks that, and I'm guilty of this too, like a Thursday afternoon or a Friday morning and staff has a pretty robust agenda packet delivery timeline because they give us ample time to be able to review the packet. And so just want to be mindful of that so that there's not any concern around decisions being made. Let's take the politics out of that.
Okay.
I would second that.
Okay. Counselor Cruz.
Yes, I definitely am in support of the spirit of this. Just want to make one clarifying question so I best understand. Doesn't stop you from submitting it ahead of that. It's just an end limit. Cool. Thank you.
Yeah, I think what it's hoping to do is just clarify, you know, you could send it away in advance, but just giving some notice to staff.
And the mayor. It gives us a little bit more time to be able to work through it. There might be multiple channels that, you know, need to be looked at as a part of that request. So this allows a little more time for us to work through that before it's forced on the agenda for that next meeting. Counselor Low.
Thank you. Not to belabor the point, I agree this is sensible and happy to support it. I mean, clearly, like, I, I think this is extremely unlikely, but we wouldn't want like a future mayor to sort of stretch this in a way that it was never intended to be used. I just want to, want to make sure that we have like an understanding, you know, if a request for council action is submitted, you know, more than a week before the packet deadline or more than, you know, a week and a half before that. Like, what is sort of a reasonable length of time ahead of a packet deadline that is sort of plenty of time to be included in the next packet cycle? Might be a useful question to just think about.
Well, the verbiage was the packet deadline, wasn't it? So it would match, actually, the deadline that staff has to submit theirs as well.
Oh, I, oh, so the intent is literally just don't submit a request for council action after the deadline when the packet is getting into circulation? I see. Yeah, no, I mean, that seems obviously reasonable.
And it would then go into the next packet. So just making sure that folks understand that it may not make it in the immediate next meeting, but it would make it in subsequent meetings, but after the process is run through with staff and the mayor.
Right. Yeah, that makes sense. That makes sense.
Counselor Ryan.
Is the amendment clear? I mean, I like hearing what you just, that clarifying piece, but I'm not sure that the amendment would, would necessarily lead to that happening, that it would be in the next packet or not.
May I address that?
Yeah.
I think the amendment is in an effort to help us as colleagues understand some of that timing issue because there, so the internal packet deadline is subject to change. It's set by staff and how long they can, right now, they've given us ample time that could change. But there has been questions about ledge modifications coming in and some moving faster than others. And that is so much on that timing. And I think that, I mean, if we need to get into the weeds on the internal packet deadline, but that is really subject to variance.
It had previously been quite a bit shorter. And a few years ago, some of our former councilor members were saying, "We need more time, more time to prepare." And so what they did is they created a 10-day window. So now we have the packet is live and available to us on the Friday before the next regular meeting. So it's a week and, you know, it's 10 days. But the internal staff deadline is actually a week prior to that because then that gives the clerk's office the ability to compile all the information, put everything together, get it ready to go live on that Friday. So what this is doing is, by having that verbiage in there of it being with the, the internal packet deadline, is aligning our submissions with the staff deadline submission.
Yeah, and I'm fully in support of that. My question was a little more to, we had the clarifying, hey, it'll appear in the next packet if it doesn't make it in the first. And I don't know that, and, and that gives me a lot of comfort. But I don't know that the amendment makes that clear, that it would appear in the next packet. So that's, that's my, that was my question. I'm in support of the intent of what you guys are, of what was being proposed, excuse me. And so I'll be supportive of that. I would just like that clarifying language somehow added in there.
Any, so something to the effect of anything received after a deadline would be in the next regular business meeting?
But it says that. It says it's in the next in-progress regular city council meeting. So to me, that indicates that it didn't make it in this one, but it'd make it to the next in-progress meeting because it's an already scheduled meeting. But I'm, if you have specific language that you'd like to wordsmith, I'm open to it.
Counselor Cruz.
Just for my clarity, can you just read exactly the proposal again? I just think the word "window" was just messing with me a little bit because it felt like a week in which we could do something, but that's not what you're saying. So sorry, that, that is not moving through my brain as it should be.
"Requests submitted outside of the planning retreat are added to the next in-progress regular city council meeting agenda meeting packet and are subject to internal packet deadlines."
We have a motion and a second. I have no more hands up. So we'll go ahead and vote. Are you making? Okay. We'll go ahead and move forward with a vote. A yes vote is adding the verbiage of internal deadlines, what Mayor Protam said. So go ahead and cast your vote, please. And that passes nine yeas, one nay. Do we have any other amendments this evening on policies and procedures? Okay. So with that, may we have a motion?
I move for the adoption of resolution 2024-36 as amended.
Second. Is there any other discussion? All right, go ahead and cast your votes. Passes nine yeas, one nay, the nay being counsel over. Okay. Will the clerk please read item 11 into the record?
Item 11, first, sorry, second reading in public hearing for ordinance O-2024-19, amending Title II, Section 2.02, Subsection 020 of the Lakewood Municipal Code to adopt Bob's Rules of Procedure as the procedural rules of the city council and revise other ancillary provisions.
Okay, thank you. And with that, I will go ahead and open the public hearing on this ordinance, 2024-119. I have no one signed up to speak on this topic up here. We'll remind you, the floor is open if anyone would like to speak to this. Give you a second. I see none. All right, with that, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing on this topic. And may I please have a motion?
Here, I move for the adoption of ordinance O-2024-19 on second and final reading.
Second. All right, any council questions or discussion? Okay, please go ahead and cast your vote. And that passes 10 yeas. Thank you, all of you, for being here through such mundane things. We appreciate it. But I guarantee you, this will help us work together more efficiently, more effectively as a team as we move forward. So thank you, everybody, for sitting through this not-so-exciting thing. With that, I believe that brings us to the point in the evening where the public is invited to address the city council on items that did not appear on the agenda. The goal of public comment is to create a welcoming environment here in chambers to all of our residents and all of our stakeholders that come in this evening or any evening to share their concerns for the community. I will note that the purpose of this time is for us to hear from you. This is a listen-only session. If you'd like to engage in any conversation, would invite you to reach out to city councilors or myself through phone, email, all of the above. For anyone attending virtually, again, we do have LakewoodSpeaks.org open and available to accept your comments that will be included verbatim in the meeting minutes. That will be available to you until 10:00 a.m. on Tuesday morning. For in-person public comment, I do ask that all comments be directed to the city council, that anyone in observance or in attendance observe the decorum of council chambers. We ask that that means also refraining from any kind of applause or audible support or discord with the speaker. Again, we're trying to create a welcoming environment to hear all voices. If you have any handouts for council, we would ask that you please provide them directly to the city clerk and they will be distributed to the city council after the meeting. So with that, we'll go ahead and open up public comment for the evening. Right now, I have three individuals signed up. If you are here and did not sign up, it is still open and available. So I would encourage you to come up here to our city clerk and get signed up. And with that, we will hand over the floor to Mr. Mark Skinner. And with that, please, we ask that you state your name and address or name and Ward, and then we'll get your timer started with three minutes.
My name is Mark Skinner. I live in Ward 1. I've spoken to you before about the desire of the Vivian School community and neighborhood to see the school property purchased for the use as a park or public open space. There is strong interest in the neighborhood. Neighbors are very, see it as a very important piece of property. Interest is increasing and we are also expressing our desires to Jefco Schools. So just a brief update and I'll be finished. You should have in front of you a handout, three pages, and there's a letter of support from a direct descendant of the original property that later became Vivian School. There's a commentary in there by Susan Baird, who's a retired planner with Denver Parks and Recreation, making the case for parks over housing. And there's also a petition link, which we've found to be very popular. We now, in a week, have over 600 signatures and comments in favor of the property becoming a public park. And that's my update. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Skinner. Pad Fox. And then we'll have Ms. Joan Poston.
Good evening to you guys. I hope you're having a lovely day. Two meetings ago, I was assaulted at my property by a gentleman who was accusing I was looking at him, who was doing and dealing drugs off the aspects of the property. This has been a concerning issue since I was homeless, believe it or not. If you all noticed, I kind of stayed on the other side of Lakewood, not that side, for the reasons that these people have been slinging drugs for some time aspects, also running a prostitution ring in a gain aspect as well. I am 100%, 100% confirming these aspects are going down in the community. I've called the officers several times on these aspects to no avail. They are still there tonight. I've been dealing with this since I moved in and to the aspect in no respect. There is a difference between homeless people and there is a difference between drug addicts. These are not people to my aspects of individuality because of how they treat others. They do not care about the individual laws that are in place. That's why they're in the position they are. These people too would gloat on the aspect that, you know, they could do it just like anyone else, but that's why they're currently on the streets. I am going to also claim too, in these aspects, and as I have stated in the fine aspects of the officers, I am a prophet. Whether you all tend to acknowledge it or not, no longer matters. I do have proof under this surveillance that for some years and times, I have been subjected by this government and the aspects of the people you trust. If you all want to take a camera with me one day, I'll show you where you have done wrong. Poisoning the food, water supply, this current climate change we're in. Y'all remember Salons Lake not too long ago? All the fish died in that pond because of the algae blooms that are currently going. This is a situation of detrimental because of what we have caused as a society. Not no one to blame, not God, not lizard people, aliens, this world flat theory, you know, you can walk around and get back to me on that. But the aspect of disinformation, like your statistics show, that the voters of current-day, modern society are not as educated up to date on the certain factors like I am. This is why the school shootings are abundant lately, if you've noticed. Those two, I do believe governments are responsible for. Trump's aspect, I wrote Trump a letter once stating how he would lose the election and he has never once got back to me. This shows that this has all been a propaganda scheme for aspiration of control, manipulation, and doccoration of a society. Hence why the voting, you know, the lady was saying you're getting rid of kids' rights. Oh, trust me. Just like the Moses and the Pharaohs, I'm telling you this now. You have the right to decease, desist. You have the free will to continue these aspects and you will see where it will lead you. But my arm is shattered, not yours. If you ever want to take a look, 7272 West 14th, Colfax, and take a gander at what the police have not been doing. And bikers are too involved in it and I do believe someone's getting the pay. Because I'm not. I got a busted arm for my aspects. But that is all. I hope you all have a good evening and day.
Thank you, Mr. Fox. Joan Poston.
My name is Joan Poston. I live in unincorporated Jefferson County. And I'm here today, I appreciate you listening. Earlier this week, I got a phone call from one of the people that you know very well, Mr. James Mace. Mr. Mace asked me to come to tell you that he has left Lakewood and he will not be coming anymore to talk to you at all. I have not been here the last month because I, with Mr. Mace, believe that you don't listen. Mr. Mace has moved. Mr. Mace has left Lakewood and many people are leaving Lakewood at this time. I feel kind of like the gentleman that just spoke. There are things that are happening. And as I've been reading about some of the Venezuela gang members that have been in Aurora and they've come into Denver and they're headed this way. You can go down and look at what he's looking at and I think you'll probably see some of those. Lastly, I'd like to say that I have written something about the property at Fourth and Union, which, you know, I've been concerned about. And- know, I've been concerned about. And they are looking at making that a special district. I was under the impression that it had already been made a special district for mosquito mitigation last year. I may be mistaken about this, and I am now looking through minutes to make sure that that has not happened. And the last thing I'd like to address is that Mr. Mace had asked me this previous spring to get papers, a form for filling out recalling a council member. And I got those papers for him. This week, he said he needed some help with that. And I went to the clerk's office. Now, the clerk does not have a form anymore for recalls. He has a piece of paper, and you have to write your own recall litigation in order to have a recall. I don't know where and when this policy changed, but I can say this. There are people that are interested in recalls. Thank you very much for listening. And all I can say is, please be aware of what's going on at Fourth and Union. That land is still contaminated, and there are some things that are changing in our system as to how those kinds of things are regulated. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Poston. Anybody else want to speak tonight? General public comment? Okay. All right. We will go ahead and close public comment then, and move on to general business. We have two items under general business this evening. Both council requests from Councilor Ryan. So, Councilor Ryan, I'll hand off the floor for you for your first request.
I'm sorry. I don't know which order they went in, which is...
Oh, the first one is the EVs.
Okay. So, on the EVs, I originally had suggested that we send this to the Lakewood Advisory Commission to gather more information. The legal department actually shared with me that they've already gathered that information. And after talking to the Planning Commission, I'm sorry, the Planning Commission Chair and the Planning Director, what I instead request is to change it to request that the Planning Commission propose zoning code ordinance changes related to requirements to implement a comprehensive electric vehicle charging plan. So, that's the request.
It's so, it is different in that it was originally going to go to LAC, the Lakewood Advisory Commission, and instead, finding that we have more information at our fingertips than originally thought, it's being sent to Planning Commission. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second.
All right. With that, I have Counselor Maia Guerrero with your hand up.
Yes. I was wondering if you are amendable to add just a little additional specifics, which is to, in addition to this more broad prompt that has luckily already been started, and I think that's great, to look particularly into Go EV Cities as a certification that other cities in Colorado have, like, done as a resolution, and then the things that some of those cities have done. So, it's just, it helps to, like, narrow and focus a little bit. And also, there is then the potential for us to be a part of a cohort of Colorado cities that are leading the way on electric vehicles as we, like, look towards what ambitious policy might look like. So, not to take away anything, but just to add to, also particularly bring back information about the Go EV City program as one, as one component of other things that they find.
Yeah. If it's just adding that as an addition to that, I think that would be great. Yes, I'm immutable to that.
Okay. I guess I offer that as a friendly amendment?
And I accept it.
Okay.
Do we need another second?
Can that count for our second?
Plus, we're under Bob's rules now, right?
Well, that's 30 days. Okay. All right. Counselor Lo.
Thank you, Counselor Ryan. Given the change here, I'm just wondering, I think you spoke to this, but does the Chair of the Planning Commission feel that this is a good course of action, and that this is sort of a good next step for the Planning Commission, and the Planning Commission has the bandwidth to sort of take this on over the next month?
Yes. I checked with both the Chair of the Planning Commission and the Director of Planning as well, just to make sure that everybody was on board with this.
Great. And they both, they're both aligned that it's, that's a good, that's the right next step for this?
Yes.
Okay, great. Then I will be supporting it.
Okay. With that, we'll go ahead and cast your votes, please.
Sorry, point of order. Are we voting on the amendment to the motion? No.
Okay. As amended?
Yes, this is just an, this is just a motion. It's not a resolution or an ordinance. So, there was a motion made, and it was modified by a friendly amendment, which changed the second to Councilmember Maia Guerrero. But it's the motion that stands before the body.
All right. And that passes 10 yeas, 0 yeas. Counselor Ryan, number two.
So, I'm withdrawing that one.
Okay. We will withdraw the second request. First request approved. And with that, on the agenda, it has that we move forward to our executive report. We do not have an executive report to speak of this evening because of staff being busy getting budget preparation. So, with that, we'll wait for another couple of weeks to get a report and go ahead and transition this evening over to our council member ward updates. This always gets a little tenuous. I'm afraid of getting in trouble. Who am I going to pick? We'll start this evening with Ward 1.
Thank you, Mayor. We have our ward meeting this Saturday, and it starts at 9:30. It's at 9:10 Kipling at the Holy Shepherd Lutheran Church. So, we hope to see people there. We were on recess, and so it seems like a long time since we've gathered. Tomorrow night, the Mid Lakewood Civic Association has Food Truck Tuesday, 5:00 p.m. at Meadowlark Park. In addition, there's an annual meeting of the Mid Lakewood Civic Association. And so, just lots of wonderful things going on in our community in Ward 1, and specifically Mid Lakewood. So, that's all I have now. Thank you.
Couple of things to add. It was wonderful to see Mr. Skinner here tonight. I had you as part of my ward updates. You graciously have volunteered to join as part of an ad hoc committee. So, we're excited to see community members start to join in that conversation. You've been a great resource in bringing forward what the community desires are. So, looking forward to working with you more in that capacity. Counselors Sinks and I carpooled and visited every National Night Out event in Ward 1. And one of particular note was at Kipling Town Homes, where Rochelle manages that property with her family. And she opened up her home to the community, serving up Navajo tacos that her and her family had made. And I was just wildly impressed by the amount of community members that stopped by and shared a meal, and also realized, in talking with some of our first responders, that they had never been there before, which, to me, signals just the great care that her and her family put into this community. To not have the police, the firefighters, not have to respond to things was incredible. So, appreciated that. And then, one final update, in the spirit of the Olympics, I just wanted to congratulate my co-counselor, Sinks. She's a gold medalist in the recent Senior Olympics, Senior Games, sorry.
Wyoming Senior Games.
And that's it for us.
Ward 2.
I just want to congratulate us all on the tenor of this evening. I think we got a tremendous amount of work done. But that is the second time that we've all had to laugh today. And I am very impressed by my colleague's ability to get what needs to be, get done professionally, and also to maintain an excellent humor about it. We, in Ward 2, had, similar to other wards, some of our National Night Outs were rained out. But Okane Park in particular, you reminded me of the wonderful time that we were all able to have there. They were, tore everything down, put everything back in the time after the rain, and came, came back with a good, good fervor, fed a lot of people, and I had a really lovely time there. And I know that Counselor Cruz actually also spent time helping another night out, clean up while the rainstorm was happening, stacking chairs in the rain before coming to Okane Park, and deserves an absolute shout-out for having the communities back in every single possible way, which I think no one will be surprised by anyone who's met her. We have our ward meeting is a different day this month. So, typically, it's on the second Saturday. We're doing it on the third, which is the weekend of the 24th. We will be at the Mint and Seraph at 10:00 a.m., having more of a roundtable discussion over coffee and digging into upcoming meeting structures and how to ensure that we are getting the best possible community input, response, and discussion really happening. And in that same effort, we will begin in earnest, more often rotating which part of our ward we are having our meetings in. And so, we're working on nailing down our exact locations for September and October, but likely whichever one is able to work out scheduling-wise will be in Okane Park neighborhood somewhere, and we will figure out that other one as well. So, if you know of great places in Ward 2 that could host a community meeting one month, and you are interested in helping us identify those places, we definitely want to hear about it. I also want to say that there is going to be, the Colfax Safety Project is doing their next round of open houses on the next phase on the evening of the 22nd. That is an opportunity to see where all of the design has gotten to and learn more about the upcoming implementation of some of our next phases. And then, I also wanted to talk about the Okane Waterwise Tour, Garden Tour. So, it's sustainable waterwise gardens at 1:00 p.m. in the Okane Park neighborhood. You can check online for the specific addresses. I don't know that anybody listens closely enough to these ward reports for that to make, level of detail to make sense here, but 1:00 p.m. on the 24th. So, on the 24th, you can have a very busy day with us. And then, lastly, just as usual, really tremendous first Friday in, in the district, and I always want to be giving a shout-out to 40 West for their continued and ongoing shows and support of the arts. I went to different places this month than I went in July and saw all-new art, and it was fantastic.
Thank you. Just a couple of things to add. Seems like there are multiple opportunities for food trucks tomorrow, because Okane Park neighborhood is also hosting food trucks from 5:00 to 7:30 p.m. So, you can go have a sampling across wards. It should be fun. Additionally, I just wanted to celebrate a couple of new businesses that have opened or are opening across the district. Ballmer Peak Distillery opened their second location near Sheridan and Alameda, and has already been hosting some great community events and having some impact in the community. So, we are thrilled to have them in yet another part of Lakewood. And additionally, a coffee shop is opening tomorrow, Bring More Coffee on 14th and Carr. So, I'm excited to check them out and, and support folks in the neighborhood. Finally, we'll also be at the Two Creeks Neighborhood Association, I'll be at the Two Creeks Neighborhood Association this weekend on Saturday. And it is, you know, Palisade Peach season. You can always get your Palisade peaches and pears by supporting the Two Creeks Neighborhood Association with their sale. So, check out their Facebook page. I'm really excited. I'm getting twice as many peaches as last year, and really gonna go crazy with jam. So, looking forward to that.
Ward 3.
I can go first. I would like to toot the horn of Ward 3 for National Night Out, because I think this is the first time since I have been running for office and/or serving on council in Ward 3 that we have the most National Night Outs of any other ward in the city. I think triple the amount of any other ward in the city. So, way to go, Ward 3, for stepping up your game. Let's keep it going. It did make it very difficult for Counselor Lo and I to attend all of them. We tried to divide and conquer and also escape the rains. It was a fun night of meeting with neighbors and also getting rained on quite a bit. But just wanted to toot our, toot our horn here in Ward 3, because I thought that was really exciting. On August 17th, this weekend, is the last street fest that Belmar is going to be having this summer. It's from 5:00 to 9:00 p.m. on Teller Street. It's fabulous, lots of vendors, lots of food. Please come, have a good time in downtown Lakewood. And then, Counselor Lo and I are also going to be hosting our Ward 3 meeting on Saturday, the 24th. We will be at Phillips United Methodist Church from 9:30 to 10:30 a.m. And the fabulous Angie Ramirez from Lakewood, who does all of our social media and so much public information, is going to be coming to share out some communications. So, really looking forward to that. She is so great. So, don't miss it.
Yes. Big second to all of that. Counselor Stewart and I are looking forward to our next Ward 3 ward meeting, which, just a reminder, is 9:30 to 10:30 Saturday, August 24th. So, that's not this Saturday, but the next Saturday, 9:30 a.m. at Phillips United Methodist Church at 1450 South Pierce Street, for those that don't know where it is. And we're looking forward to digging in more to the topic that was on the agenda tonight about, you know, the Best of Lakewood campaign and the budget and audit board's work, and learning a little bit more about what, as of tonight, we can officially say will be on the ballot this fall. So, we'll cover that, as well as some other Ward 3 updates. Yes, I also am looking forward to going to the concert at Belmar Plaza this Saturday. The last one was really pleasant, good vibes, hoping for good weather. Haven't checked the weather, but I will be there. I will, I will look for you, Counselor Stewart. Those have been fun. I agree, the National Night Out events were just delightful. By my count, we had 10 in Ward 3. I think I made it to four, which still was not even a majority of the NNO events. But a lot of great conversations, a lot of, a lot of really good folks out in the community. Really appreciated the, our, our officers and, and our, our police folks clearly spending a lot of time going out to all these events. I think it was appreciated in the community. I was offered ice cream, I think, three different times. I did not eat three different scoops of ice cream, if my husband is watching. But, but I was tempted. I was sorely tempted. Just because, so, really, really great evening, and I really, I really appreciate the residents of Ward 3 for doing so many great events. I think it's a really great night. I just wanted to do a quick shout-out, because I didn't get to do this earlier, to, we should, we should just thank the Policies and Procedures Committee for, for their incredible work getting that done. I believe, I'm so sorry, I think it's spearheaded by Counselor, by Mayor Protem Sherzai, Counselor Labure, and Counselor Maia Guerrero, and the mayor. Did I, did I miss anyone? No, that's the group, right? So, thank you.
Not me.
Not the mayor. Oh, well, the mayor was involved. But thank you.
I prompted it.
Thank you for, for you three. That was a lot of work and a big piece of business. So, just thank you, thank you for those meetings and teeing that up and getting that done. And thank you, of course, to Ms. McKinney Brown for all of your work getting that across the finish line, too. Oh, and by the way, Cider Days, tickets are on sale. Cider Days, Saturday, October 5th, and Sunday, October 6th. Great, great, great event. Really looking forward to it. My husband is an introvert, except for in October. He likes Halloween. He comes alive. He does, like, a million social events in October. He's been, he, he has, for as long as I've lived in Lakewood, he makes me go to Cider Days from 10:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., both days, which is great. It's fun. It's a lot of fun. It's a lot of fun. But it's like a full weekend. We invite literally everyone we know. So, I will be there, both days. Find me, come seek me out. I will be around. My husband usually eats a turkey leg. I have brats. It's a great time. Be sure to get your tickets before they sell out. Oh, and by, I just, there's, for anyone, for anyone that is watching these, if you don't subscribe to the Friday Report, you really should. There's tons of good information in that newsletter. There's other great newsletters with information, but the Friday Report is just awesome, and it includes almost all of the events that we announce up here on these Monday evenings. So, if you just scroll down at the bottom of lakewood.org to subscribe to e-news, subscribe to e-newsletters, you can subscribe to the Friday Report. And it's just like a great newsletter, and you should absolutely subscribe, because there's a ton of good content in there, and just keeps you apprised on anything you could want to know, including our ward meetings and everything else that we talk about up here. So, sign up for those emails if you don't get them. It's probable, for any folks that watch to the end of the council meeting to get these updates, if you read the Friday update, you probably get most of that content. But you can watch us anyway. That's all.
Ward Four.
So, I agree on the National Night Out. So, thank you to, I know the West Metro is separate from the city, but thank you for the West Metro to come out, and our police folks. I was able to make all six events in Ward Four, rain and shine. I had go home and change one time, because my kids took the umbrella out of the car. I'm throwing them under the bus, yes, I am. But no, it was a great opportunity to meet different community members, and hear their concerns, and just see the joy of the kids. Although I did learn that the SWAT truck beats the fire truck in terms of the kids' excitement. So, tough to compete with that, I understand. Our next Ward Four meeting is September 19th at 7:00 o'clock at Green Mountain Rec Center. And so, hopefully, folks will show up and tell us their concerns, and some of the things that we'll be voting on soon enough. Thank you.
Okay. I'm gonna repeat myself from another time, mainly because it's mid-August, and school is going back into session very soon, and that includes colleges. I've mentioned before that if you're over 60, you can audit college classes almost at every college I've looked into in the metro area. And that means you can get there, go and sit, and as long as they have a chair. That's about all you need, and the professor's permission. So, now would be the time to be looking in college catalogs. MSU, or Red Rocks, or UCD, UCD? DU. DU actually charges, I haven't looked at this in a little while, so a couple of years ago, DU charged $75 for the whole semester. I mean, what more do you want? MSU, I know, is free. CU Denver is free. I don't know what Red Rocks was. They're all around 60 years old. I know CU Boulder was 58, and they charged $50 for a class for the whole semester. So, I mean, for value, you just can't beat it if you're inquisitive about anything at all. You can probably go and audit legal classes, or pre-med, or psychology, or theater, or, you know, think about it. It's a really good thing, and really good deal for anybody who's interested in going and is over 60. Thanks.
Ward Five.
Thank you. I just want to point out that we're keeping it a little weird in Ward Five. Southern Gables, we do our National Night Out after National Night Out. So, we have ours August 23rd, so if you didn't get enough, there's opportunities to do it again. August 23rd, 5:00 PM to 8:00 PM. I just want to point that out. It's at Green Gables Elementary School, and looking forward to that. And I think I'll just leave it there. Thanks.
All right. I will bring us home with another thank you for National Night Out. But I want to take a special moment to thank the people that spent an inordinate amount of time organizing these events. I know it takes a lot of time to plan the food and to get the people to come. And sometimes, it's just really challenging to get neighbors to show up. So, for those neighbors that did show up, and for the neighbors that took the time to really invest in their community by throwing these events, this is the kind of stuff, it seems maybe light and fluffy, but when we meet our neighbors, it opens up the opportunity to build bridges. It also opens up lots of ways that we are now connected with each other can actually keep our neighborhoods safer. So, thank you for everybody that invested in that. And it is always fun to drive around, and you're basically following PD as the police are showing up here. And it's cool. You get to see sometimes the dog demo, sometimes the drone demos, and of course, the firefighters. So, it is a very fun night. I personally did not have the opportunity to participate this year, but I look forward to doing it again next year. Want to send a big congratulations and a shout out to one of our very enthusiastically invested small businesses here in the city of Lakewood. The African Gorilla Bar just has celebrated 20 years of being business. If you have not been there, they are off of Kipling, right by the big old bowling lane. I think that's Kentucky is the side street. It's amazing. And I will warn you, when it says it's hot, it's hot. So, be careful. But amazing restaurant with the most passionate and supportive human beings that you could ever know that are running that. So, thank you, or not thank you, but congratulations for a successful business so long and running. Also, a note for our North Lakewood residents, we just had the switch over to the brand-new Lutheran Hospital, which itself is absolutely amazing. So, just a notice to everybody up north who may utilize Lutheran, it is not in the same place, so check into it before you go. And check it out. They have actually, they've created it so that you go in, and food's right there. You can actually go in, and some of the neighbors actually do this. They go in and have coffee in the morning and things like that. So, look into that. It's a really amazing new medical facility in North Lakewood. And with that, I will go ahead and adjourn us this evening. So, thank you, all of you who've been here this evening to move through this, and we'll see you maybe again in two weeks. Have a good night.